All right, good evening, everybody. I want to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for October 21st, 2025. And like to start with a prayer and pledge of allegiance. Also, a reminder, we'll see if I can do it better this time, to please silence your phones. I was a bit challenged last time. All right, if we all stand, please. Father, we're gathered here today with the shared responsibility to serve our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on important decisions that will affect the lives of our citizens of Elbert County. May we approach our task with integrity and a commitment to doing what is right, help us to listen with open minds to diverse perspectives, and may our discussions and decisions be rooted in fairness, respect, and compassion. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to serve and for your guidance that you offer. We also ask you for protection for those that serve our community and our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Wendy, roll call, please.
Roll call. Ken Madsen.
Here.
Diana Edstrom.
Here.
Dan McCallum.
Here.
Kyle DiNardo.
Here.
Nicole Hunt.
Here.
John Gresham.
Here.
DeeDee Shot Grace. DeeDee Shot Grace, absent. Robert Politik.
Here.
And Kevin Kirkwood is absent with notice.
All right, thank you. Reports. Jennifer?
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. It has been a little while since you all have gathered here. Looks like about a month. I see some of you more often. I didn't realize how long it had been. So we do have several updates for you all on items that have been to the Board of County Commissioners. So the regulation updates recommended by you all have gone to the Board. They've had two work sessions on those and are having, will be having another one. So they are spending, digging into those regulations and what changes will be made. Those are the four that were recommended by this Planning Commission about community meeting, EDZ. Remember those? Yes. Those same ones. On the 8th of October, the Board heard and did approve the final Platts for filing 1 and 2 of the Crescent's project. They approved the Green Hills rezone, and they have continued the Coyote Ridge PUD that will be finalized tomorrow at the B.O.C.C. meeting. So. And then just one last quick note. While I have the mic, there is only one PC meeting in November, and so your next regularly scheduled meeting is November 18th. So it'll be a month again before we see you all.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, next agenda item is Citizens' Comment, and this is for anything that we're not hearing tonight. So anything that is, anybody who has a comment that wouldn't be associated with the vigil rezone, please come up, state your name, state your address, and we give you typically about five minutes to speak. Noteakers?
Not in relation to that.
Not, anything not in relation to that. All right, going once. All right, sold. All right, next item. Approval of the meeting minutes. So the PC meeting minutes from September 16th, 2025. Did everybody have a chance to review? Is there any changes, edits, updates that anybody would like to speak? Nobody? All right, with that, all those in favor of approving those meetings, say aye.
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 About move, I'll move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Thank you. Just to give everybody kind of an overview of the public hearing process, basically, the presentation and the application that's before us tonight, there'll be staff presentation, and at the conclusion of that, the actual applicant can also make a presentation, you know, make any additional comments associated with the application itself. And then, at that point, we'll open the floor for public testimony with regards to the application. At the end of that, we will close it. The applicant then has an opportunity to rebut anything that is stated during the public testimony, and then at that time, there will be a board-only discussion. So any comments that you make, make sure you get them all stated during, you know, your public time. And then, at the end of the board discussion and questioning the applicant, there will be a motion to approve or deny or approve with certain stipulations and a vote. So with that, Danny, I believe you, you have the floor for the application tonight?
Yes, I do. All right, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Danny Klavanner, and I'm a land use planner here with Elbert County. Tonight, my presentation will be for the V-Hill rezone application and followed by the preliminary plat application. We'll kind of roll it into one. So, project summary here to start. The site is located on Private Road 23, and that is north of County Road 124. The parcel number is 8433200498. The site size is 57.5 acres. The applicant representative here today is Jill Repella, and she is representing the owners Shane Jensen and Sean McEgan. And the request is a rezone from agriculture to agriculture residential. Right, a look at our county here with kind of that L piece shaved off. You can see that little light blue circle. The site is three miles south of Elizabeth approximately and about five miles southwest of Kiowa. Here's a look at the zoning map. The surrounding properties are all ag or agriculture residential. The properties range in size from 10 acres to 81 acres. Here's an aerial view of the property. You can see Private Road 23 cuts through this oddly shaped property. It's kind of Maryland shaped, or it's got that interesting horseshoe. You can see some of the missile silos there in the middle of the site. That is not part of the property. That is a separately owned property that is currently owned by Elbert County. Here's another look. Currently, there's no structures. It's forested on either side of the road, and you can kind of see on the far left there, near that black line, there is a driveway. There's an easement there for one of the lots in the Watts subdivision. And here's a look at the eastern arm of the property, again, surrounding the Elbert County-owned site, which was previously known as Site 2C, decommissioned Titan Missile Site and an Elbert County Compactor Site. So, some background in existing conditions for this property. Again, no existing structures about three miles south of Elizabeth, directly south of the Watts subdivision, another agricultural residential subdivision. There's forested areas on each side of the existing road. There's no wetlands or flood plain in the main area. There's a small seasonal wetland that's on the eastern arm over there of the property, and it is accessed via Private Road 23. So the process for this began back in January of this year with a pre-application meeting. Then we had a community meeting in March. There were referral periods from June 12th to July 3rd of this year, and then a second referral from August 26th to September 9th. And all notice requirements meet Elbert County zoning regulations with mailed notice to surrounding property owners within a quarter mile. That was done October 1st. Public notice sign posted at the subject property October 1st. A newspaper notification published in Ranchland News October 2nd. And here we are today, the 21st, with a scheduled Board of County Commissioners on the 19th. So these are the agencies that reviewed and gave us feedback for this project. You can see primarily Elbert County Departments, as well as Elizabeth Fire Protection District, Core, Colorado Geological Survey, Kiowa Conservation District, and the Colorado Division of Water Resources. So during the community meeting, there were approximately eight residents outside of the applicants and their representative and staff. I was at this one also, so I've seen this project since the start with the pre-application meeting through until the hearing. Some concerns were road conditions for the private road. That was the general concern, as it is a private road and with the broader neighborhood, a lot of users with this road. Then there were general application questions. How does this process work? What is the request details? And we have not received any comments since the community meeting phase. So some considerations for decision for strictly the rezone would be that the surrounding zoning is agriculture and agriculture residential. Compatibility with larger agricultural lots and smaller residential. There's also a commercial lot nearby, possibly an egg farm there immediately to the west. Another consideration, all referral agency comments have been addressed. So for the rezone, Elbert County zoning regulations, Article 3C4 lists the following as criteria for your review. The first is that it's generally consistent with the goals of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. Given the stated goals of our comprehensive plan, it could be found that the rezoning is consistent. The proposed rezoning may support Elbert County comprehensive goal of residential development that is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. This development would be accessed by the existing private road that bisects the parcel. Further, it may support the residential goal of diverse lot sizes. Within the immediate vicinity of the rezoning application are lots that range from 10 to 81 acres. The project site is roughly three miles from the town of Elizabeth. B, whether it is compatible with surrounding land uses. The surrounding properties are zoned agriculture and agriculture residential with commercial uses also to the west. The lots directly north of the subject property fall within the same zoning classification, identical 10-acre lots as to the north. Whether the proposed rezone would not adversely impact public services. This proposed rezone would likely not adversely impact public services. Public Works, Public Health, and the Division of Water Resources reviewed this rezoning application and had no objections. Permitting for onsite wastewater treatment systems, which require approval from Elbert County Public Health, will be administered on a lot-by-lot basis. D, whether the rezoning will not adversely impact the environment. The Kiowa Conservation District had no objections to the rezoning. With no evidence of concerns shared, the proposed rezone likely would not adversely impact the environment. E, whether the proposed rezone would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. Elbert County Public Works had no objections. The proposed rezone would likely not create unreasonable traffic or burden the existing road system. They will have to improve the private road to Elbert County standards and widen the easement, but we'll get into more of that with the plating. And whether or not it would be detrimental to the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. With no comments in opposition to the proposal from Elbert County Office of Emergency Management, Sheriff's Office, and the Elizabeth Fire Protection District, and no evidence of any concerns from the referral agencies, it could be found that this application will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. So a few conditions of approval. The first is that the applicant shall remove signs within two weeks of the conclusion of the meetings and public hearings. Signs not removed may be removed by Elbert County and subject to reasonable charges. Two, the rezone shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibit is recorded. Three, recordation of all appropriate documents to occur within 180 days of Board of County Commissioners approval. And four, minor revisions be made to the rezone exhibit to meet county standards. So that is the presentation for the rezone, and Robert wanted me to roll right into the preliminary plat. So we'll get that moving, and then the discussion on both will start after that. So the preliminary plat is case PP 2025-0002. And again, here's the site. Here's a look at the plat, 57.5 acre parcel with the proposed zoning of agriculture residential, and the plat is obviously contingent upon approval of the rezone. Here's another look at the site from a little further up. You can see it outlined there, same shape. We don't need to go into this again. Here's another zoning map, a little bit broader. You can see over here, to the top right is Arrowhead Subdivision. You have County Road 1721 there on the left side of your screen. Here's a look at the proposed preliminary plat. They are proposing five 10-plus acre lots. So each lot would be at least 10 acres. The land east of the road is connected technically to Lot 2, and this is a request for a variance that will have to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners, because typically we do not allow roads to split lots. Obviously, in this case, there is already a road splitting a lot, and, you know, significantly less of the lot would be split by road. You have the three lots to the south there, 3, 4, and 5. Those are all 10-plus acres and meet all the standards. They did some design changes to widen the Lot 5, so it's at least 250, and each of these lots has building envelopes. So as you can see on Lot 2 at the top, it's about 15 acres, but roughly 10 of those acres are on the other side of the road, and their building envelope, which would meet all agriculture residential standards for setbacks, is about 1.75 acres. Whereas, you can see the Lot 2, or Lot 1, excuse me, they have about five-acre building envelopes. So quite a bit of land would not be built on in this proposal. All right, and here's a look at the neighboring property. It was, again, a former Titan Missile Complex site, and it was also a compactor site. So you can see here the design of these, which is kind of cool to see cross-section here with the missile silos and the other infrastructure that's involved in these. There's also several monitoring wells around the area here, and I'd like to note that they were advised by their water engineer to go down to the Denver Aquifer because of potential contamination in the surrounding area with the Lower and Upper Dawson. So, for Elbert County's review criteria for preliminary Platts, they must meet Elbert County subdivision regulations, Article 2C, these five criteria. The first is that evidence that provision has been made for a water supply that is sufficient. So the preliminary plat was reviewed by the Division of Water Resources, and there was no objection noted to the water adequacy. Water supply for the lots will be served by individual wells. The Division of Water Resources deemed the water supply plan to be adequate. The quantity in, the quantity for each lot meets Elbert County subdivision 300-year water supply requirements as well. The minimum amount of water required for a residential lot in Elbert County is about .4 acre feet. In this subdivision, based on their research, they need about .7 acre feet per lot, so about 3.4 acre feet for the development. The water rights for the property includes about 3.7 acre feet from the Lower Dawson, about eight from the Denver Aquifer, so they have sufficient water without using any Upper Dawson water here. B, that evidence that provision has been made for sewage disposal. Again, there's no sewage system here. It's just going to be onsite wastewater treatment systems for each lot, which will require permitting from Elbert County Public Health. C, evidence to show that all areas that may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards. So, for this, the site was reviewed by the Colorado Geological Survey. There are test wells on the site, and it was also reviewed by Elbert County Public Health. So the site contains only isolated areas of steep slopes. It is outside of the Running Creek and Dry Creek mapped 100-year flood hazard, and no unusual geologic hazards are known or suspected to be present that would preclude the proposed residential density. Colorado Geological had no objection and to approval of preliminary plat, 2025-0002. All right, and finally here, D and E. The application is in compliance with Elbert County subdivision regulations and Elbert County zoning regulations. As I pointed out, they are asking for that variance with the road crossing one of the lots. There's also an area that doesn't meet agriculture residential width. That's in the arm of the horseshoe on the eastern side, and currently, the minimum defined lot size for agriculture is 500 feet. The minimum for agriculture residential is 250 feet. That area in that horseshoe is about 90. So that's just based on the shape of the lot. And then, E, the proposed plat is consistent with the intent, policies, and goals of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. The plan, Elbert County Comprehensive Plan could be used to support this. There, the site would allow for various lot sizes and higher residential density, which is compatible with lots nearby, adjacent to the north. All right, so some considerations for decision here. The surrounding properties are, again, zoned agriculture and agriculture residential with similar 10-acre lot sizes in the area with the 3 to the north, and there's a 14-acre lot that is zoned agriculture just to the east of the property. The applicant addressed all initial concerns from review agencies at this time. They still will have to go through approval of a final plat, and a subdivision improvement agreement will be fully executed at the time of final plat. Adequacy of water to support the subdivision was shown to the, by the Division of Water Resources. So some potential conditions of approval, the same one about the signs here. Again, it will not become effective until fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibit is recorded. Recordation of all appropriate documents to occur within 180 days of Board of County Commissioner approval. And not more than 12 months after satisfying the conditions of approval for the preliminary plat and sign-off by appropriate parties, a complete final plat application shall be submitted to our department for review and processing, and that the preliminary plat exhibit meets Elbert County standards. So that is my presentation, and I believe the applicant wanted to show a few photos. Do you want those now, or, okay. So here's a look on the ground, and looking west towards Pike's Peak there, southwest. Here's some wildflowers and nice sunset.
Just real quick, what are the vantage points of each of those pictures? Could you go back to the first one?
Is that 23, or is that?
That's Private Road 23. Where it's slightly.
Please go to the mic, sir, please.
Please, yeah. Thank you. State your name, please.
Dominic V-Hill. That's Private Road 23 where it goes north initially, and then it kind of turns northeast, and that's the northeast facing from the southeast going northeast.
Thank you. Next one.
That photo is from the north side of the property facing southwest, towards Pike's Peak.
Okay.
Don't remember.
Okay.
We had several photos. If I'm not mistaken, that one's facing southwest from the north side as well.
Okay.
And that one's facing due south from, the photo was taken from the private road facing due south, towards the tree line.
Okay.
Was that the last one?
All right, thank you very much. And the applicant representative, I understand you're here, Jill?
Hi, Jill Repella, applicant representative. Thank you for considering our applications. I appreciate your consideration, and I want to thank your staff, Danny and Jennifer have been wonderful to work with, so I wanted to say thank you for that. We don't really have anything to add. Danny did such an adequate job with the presentation, and it's a pretty straightforward application. Both applications are pretty straightforward, and we wanted to save you the time of a repeat presentation. So if there's any questions, we're here to ask them.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. When you come up, please sign in, state your name and your address, and you have about five minutes to present your material associated with both of these applications. Thank you. Kristy Swiger?
Hi, Kristy Swiger. I'm speaking on behalf of the Swiger family. We live at 31224 Private Roads, Private Road 23, so about a half a mile back off of Private Road 23. We use that stretch of road each and every day. I just wanted to come speak on behalf of my family. We just had concerns with the maintenance for the road in the coming years. So I believe my dad had come and expressed these concerns at the prior meeting. They had moved back there about 1996, so back then, there was two houses, and now, with this addition of five more, there'll be about 13 houses using that road. I'm going to ask first, this is my first meeting. Can I ask questions, or am I making statements?
Yes, absolutely. You can ask questions. We will take notes and... We will take notes and make sure those particular questions are responded to.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. My first question is, obviously, this is a private road, as you've seen, and the number of houses has grown exponentially. I think it's important to note that the 10-acre lots that he's referencing were just recently subdivided in the last two years. So a lot of the others are 40-acre lots or right around there. We just basically have concerns with the maintenance. We have five more houses, so, you know, more UPS trucks, more Amazon, more, yeah, trucks like that, you get what I'm saying. So my question is, we are a private road. As this continues to grow and the county continues to grow, and if further lots get subdivided, what is that threshold for the county looking to maintain any part of that? And if there's any role for us to play, how do we do that? I guess that's my question.
Okay.
So, looking at a few notes. Yeah, I guess our request would be consideration for that half-mile stretch of private road to be considered to become a county road once that threshold would be passed.
All right.
If so. And that's all the comments that I had for you.
All right, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has a comment, questions? All right, first, I'd like to start off with staff. Then, you know, based upon that comment, is there, with Public Works, a typical threshold for assuming a private road into the county maintenance scheme?
Not at this time. The Public Works Department has maintained the policy that they will not accept more private road.
Okay. Second question I have is, based upon your presentation, you made mention of the maintenance of the road. What is that particular consideration? Or is there something that would be part of an agreement during the final plating?
So during the final plat, we can require that the road be built to Elbert County Public Works standards. So basically, right now, there's a 40-foot easement. They'd have to widen that to 60 feet to meet our local type 1. They'd also have to use, you know, basically, no driveway permit, which would not allow any building permit, would be given until the road is checked and meets Elbert County specifications. They can also work to come together with the neighbors and with, you know, an additional five parties taking care of the road could possibly come to a private road agreement with their neighbors. But they will need to maintain and construct that stretch to Elbert County Public Works standards.
Okay, let me make sure I heard you correctly. So you're saying that to have, to have an agreement between the neighbors, it would have to then be understood that the road would have to be updated to Elbert County standards? Or do they, can they have an agreement amongst the neighbors to maintain it as is?
So Elbert County Public Works will not allow any driveway or access permits until it meets our, basically, local type 1 standards. So we can, we will withhold driveway permits, which basically in turn hold building permits until the road meets all Elbert County standards for a type 1 road. We'll also have, you know, past that, it is difficult with private road maintenance. So there's no HOA here, there's no, there's a lot of private parties. So it could be in the best interest, then, of the neighbors to come together and come to some kind of road maintenance agreement for the length. However, we cannot, it's hard for us to tell people to come together and come to any type of agreement.
So let me throw a bit of logic into this. How were the existing properties and their existing driveway permits approved prior to this particular application? Why does this application then necessitate?
So that, that is a good question. For example, that Watts subdivision.
Yeah.
There were certain standards that should have been met for the private road before they could have received any driveway permits. I did see on their plat, that's basically what it said. It sounds like there were some issues with this Watts subdivision, and maybe it wasn't as enforced as well as it should have been to allow for some of these driveway permits to come before, you know, the road was improved.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I will close public comment and open now for board discussion and/or questions. John, you want to start? All right, very good. Microphones, make sure you got your mics on.
Yeah, so my question, Danny's to you. Was it advised or required to use a Denver Aquifer?
It was advised by, by their own water engineer.
And then for the road aspect of it, just so I'm clear, it'd be the responsibility of this project and this owner to then develop that road to county standards. And then that would not become a cost as part of a shared maintenance agreement. That would only be after they pay to increase that width of that road.
That's correct, yes.
That's all the questions I had, thank you.
No questions? Nicole?
I do have a few questions. One has to do with, I know several times in the paperwork, the Kiowa Conservation Referral Sheet was referred to, but I didn't actually see it in the packet.
I do have it here. If, if, there's a lot of attachments, sometimes something can be missed. So, yes, I can give you the, it's just, it's just your basic no objections letter.
Like they marked no objections and nothing else?
Exactly, yeah.
Because I did have some questions, just was curious if there were discussions. Obviously, there's a lot of trees in this particular area. So, and while we don't have something in our zoning regulations yet on tree preservation, it is something that this, this planning commission has talked a lot about, as has the B O C C. So just wanted to ask a little bit about that. I thought that might be something that the Kiowa Conservation would have commented on.
Yeah, so we actually do have something about tree preservation in our zoning regulations. Whenever you remove a tree, mature tree, you're supposed to plant another mature tree. So that is something in our zoning regulations. So if there are improvements that need to be made to that road, one of our design regulations is that, basically, once you remove a mature tree, you have to plant another mature tree. So if there's, you know, road improvements and widening, they would have to plant trees if they're removing some.
Okay. And then I wanted to bring up the Geological Survey referral. Because, yes, I do see in bold, it says that the CGS, therefore, has no objection to approval, but we have advisory comments. And then I just want to read what they say. They say that lot-specific investigation, sampling, lab testing, and analysis, once individual building locations have been identified, are needed prior to building permit application to characterize the soil and bedrock engineering properties like density, strength, water content, swell consolation, and potential, and how that might affect the build. So just wanted to get your thoughts on whether or not this is something that should be a condition to approval.
So with, with a residential building permit, you are required to do soil testing. So there's really no getting around that. It's a standard part of building a new residence is doing soil tests. So we could add it as an additional, just, you know, but it is part of the permitting process.
It's something that the county would already check for.
Yeah, that's something that is required.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that is something, since it is advised. Let's see, wanted to ask, just on the topic of the road, knowing, understanding that there are private party agreements that will need to take place. But I'm, I'm curious what the county has done in the past when you have a private, the county is responsible for potentially creating up to five new properties, which are all going to be using this road. When there are parties that might potentially need to enter into agreements or negotiations, I've seen in other locations where it becomes part of the condition that the parties come to some kind of an agreement over how this is going to be managed, because it will obviously impact the, the well-being and the driving capabilities of other Elbert County citizens. So were there discussions about, maybe we are not specifying exactly what has to be done with regard to that arrangement, but that the parties do, the parties who share this road for their homes, come to some kind of an agreement privately about how they're going to share that responsibility? Is that something that this county has done before?
It's been a discussion. It, it has been a discussion about, you know, requirements for a road maintenance agreement. It can be difficult to enforce because it is a, basically, if the county had, you know, if the county was accepting roads, you know, that could potentially make a lot of things easier. Because the county is not accepting roads, I mean, we can definitely encourage private road agreements. It's, it's difficult. And I, I'd have to consult the county attorney more about what could be required with a private road agreement. It's also interesting because the road does not align with the easement. So right now, like, if they were to move the road to where the easement is, that would be a huge cost to everybody. Which, you know, and based on the topography and where the trees are, I don't think anybody has any interest in doing that. But, yeah, I mean, there's a few things with this easement and the road that will need to be figured out before any final plat could be approved.
I would like to see, while not necessarily outlining exactly what those, you know, details are that the private parties would come to, but I would like to see, obviously, if this road is widened. If, I live on a dirt road, so I know what it's like when you're having to clear that out, or potentially, you know, resurface it to make it drivable again, or even just clear it of snow. There's a lot of responsibility and costs that come with that. So I would like to see that there is an agreement among the parties of how to move forward, knowing that that's not something that the county itself can enforce. But I'd like to see goodwill on behalf of the applicant, that that's something that you're willing to pursue. Because what I, what I would hate to see is the applicant having to spend a lot of money to get this road up to code. And obviously, that sounds like that's going to cost more money in the long run to maintain as well, but not have an agreement on how to, how to maintain it with the neighbors. So that's something I think that we should consider at least putting as a condition. I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Yes, this was a topic of conversation in the community meeting. And one point that has not been made yet, the V. Hills, it's a family who is going to acquire all of these lots. So Dominic and Crystal are here. They're the parents, and they have four adult married children who would be taking the other lots. So that creates a benefit. You have five more parties who are contributing to the maintenance cost and the maintenance work. So that'll, that'll be helpful. And the road that is, is currently not in the easement that's identified on the drawings. And so we will be going through the process of also correcting that and making sure that the road, the access easement, is in alignment with where the road is actually built. And so we'll be going through all those processes and more than happy to work with the existing neighbors on this and committed to doing that, because it benefits everybody if everybody's involved in that road maintenance. But the V. Hills recognize that the road improvements are on them, even though the previous subdivision didn't contribute.
And I think I saw, was the community meeting, was that back in March, when those initial discussions were just coming up about the road? Have you talked to the neighbors any since then about kind of what your plan might be or what you might suggest for how to share the burden of the maintenance?
We wanted to get through this process to make sure that the preliminary plat was approved, so we knew then how to move forward as the road aligns in relation to the lots. So that was kind of the first step.
Mm-hmm, but then you're committed to having those conversations moving forward?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Ken Madsen, I had a couple more questions on the road. So I guess, how is the road currently maintained? And is there any agreement currently among the residents on how to maintain the road?
Sure, go ahead.
I could actually clarify that. My name's Stephen Luttrell Jr. I'm at 31190 on the, the northeast side, yep, right up there. We've been there for about five years now. Currently, it is maintained by, basically, whoever has a tractor available at the moment. I'm not up there during the wintertime, so, but along that top line of the V. Hill property, that is, yep, right on there, that is currently maintained by, basically, whoever can. And that is direct access, that's Road 126. That goes to different properties around there. So, like I said, I can't maintain it. And then Private Road 023 goes along the west side of my property, the entirety of my property. And that is, again, maintained by the north, northwest property. So again, I can't maintain it when I'm not there. I don't have a house up there, I don't live up there. So, and we have kind of discussed what to do about this. And everything that we have discussed kind of leads just one step away from an HOA, which is what a lot of us are trying to stay away from and not become an HOA out there when it comes to the costs, when it comes to the maintenances, and when it comes to written agreements.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And I guess I, I would just like to state that I kind of agree with Nicole, that, you know, I don't know if there's some point along the process that we could say, you know, not require the terms and conditions of an agreement, but an agreement has to come into play before the final plat gets approved. I guess I'd like us to look into that, because I think that would be important for this. Secondly, and this, I guess, would be a question probably for Jill. So I'm, I'm looking at the water survey or the water comments that came back from the Division of Water Resources. And I noticed that, you know, they, they quote, you know, the Elbert County Regulations, which is a, that the applicant so present a water supply plan that provided for a 300-year water aquifer lifespan. And they came through and they, they said that they thought the water supply was adequate, but then they, they have a qualification. And I guess I'd just like to read what the qualification is and see what your response is to that. So it says, "The amounts, the amounts of water in the Denver water basin aquifer and identified in this letter are calculated based on estimates, current, estimated current aquifer conditions. The source of water is from a non-renewable aquifer, the allocations of which are based on 100-year aquifer life. The county should be aware that the economic life of a water supply based on wells in a given Denver basin aquifer may be less than 300 years, used for allocation due to anticipated water level declines. We recommend the county determine whether it is appropriate to require development of a renewable water resource for this subdivision to provide for longer-term water supply." And I guess I'd like to know your comments based on that.
I'm very familiar with that statement, because they put it on every single application. And there is no renewable water infrastructure supplies available. And the groundwater has been found to be candidly more than adequate to meet that 300-year requirement, because it's just single-family homes and quite large lots. So we did a lot of analysis on that.
Okay, thank you.
I can't answer it specifically, because that's such a generic statement that they put on every application. And that last part of it is really more appropriate for larger, more dense developments.
I understand, thank you.
Diana?
Don't sit down. Please. I think I have a road question that nobody else has asked yet. Diana Edstrom. What part of county, of Private Road 23 are you going to be bringing up to the county standards? The whole Private Road? The whole private road?
There's a lot of private road on this particular property, so they'd be taking care of what is on their property and what goes down to the main road is what we've been told that we need to do the improvements on.
Okay.
And just for your reference, the road was recently improved, just not quite to the standard, the private road standard that the county would like to see. So we have to do a little bit more improvement to take it to that standard, but it was recently approved and it's actually in pretty good condition.
Did I hear it needs to be widened to 60 feet?
Yes.
Okay. And I assume you've looked at that, it's physically possible that that, there is space there for that?
And as a matter of fact, that's why the road is not currently in the existing road access easement, because that access easement was, the slopes, the terrain, the trees, that's likely why they didn't originally build that road in that access easement.
So, back to the part you'd maintain, so would it be from 124, and I've just got the county map up on my phone, so would it be from 124 up to, it looks like Private Road, Private Road 126 is where it intersects on the east?
It would go to the property line to the north.
Okay.
What's on their property.
Okay. But since it looks like their property line doesn't extend all the way down to County Road 124, will they take it down to there or will they only widen it 60 feet on their property line?
It's a tough pill to swallow, but I think we've been told we have to take it all the way down to 124.
Okay. And Danny, is that, since it didn't seem to be really specified anywhere, is that something we can put in the conditions of approval so that it does, yeah, it does happen and get followed up on?
Yeah, let's put that as a condition, yeah, to the, you want to say, from 124?
Let's see. Oh, and...
But...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it gets difficult because it is a private road, and if the existing easement on that property is 40, then we're not, they're not allowed to touch that. If that easement on the lower properties is 40, they wouldn't be able to go in there and widen it to 60 because that access easement would be 40 there. So that's something we could look into, getting consent from the neighbors down there to allow them to widen it, but...
But the Public Works' condition was for them to be able to get driveway permits on their property, they had to do a type 1 type of installation, only on their property is what Public Works told them. So to go beyond their property would have to be getting permission from other landowners associated with that to, you know, whether or not they desired that improvement or not, who knows?
If I, okay. I would hate to see you guys get farther down the road and then something else comes up with the road. So Danny, maybe along with conditions of approval, can we get a, work out some kind of an agreement with Public Works where you can get assurance as to where you have to do that widening, rather than it just being verbal?
Just to make sure it's clear, so we've committed to doing that, we're required to do the road widening on their property, if it's possible to take it all the way down to 124. But again, that would require the consent of the current property owner to give up some of their land for that widening.
Okay.
And so that is not something that would be in the property owner's control.
Okay.
We would do what we can, but if they say no, they say no, and I would hope that it, you know, the road improvements on their property would then allow them to get their driveway permits.
Yep. I live on a private road, it can get interesting sometimes, but we have a, I have a husband that has a grader and a tractor, and he likes doing that.
Probably lots of really good examples out there about neighbors cooperating and probably lots of them that not so much, but we're feeling optimistic that we can work it out.
Absolutely. Could you provide a little more information about the family? I'll call it a compound if that's okay.
I'd be more than...
And it's not the Kennedys either, I'm sure, but I, you alluded to it, so how are, how's that going to work? You're all going to live together?
Each individual family will take one of those lots and build their single-family homes.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, let's see...
Just one step further than a mother-in-law residence.
Not as close.
You know, I think...
Yeah, mine's too close.
That was it, but I did just, I did just want to say, this is one of the best well-done applications I've seen in a long time.
Great, thank you.
It was very thorough, complete, accurate, and these people know I have a very sharp pencil and I'm always finding something wrong.
That's high praise coming from Diana.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I did just want to tell you that. And I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. DeeDee?
Okay. I am a little concerned about the road.
And those concerns are?
Well, it's going to be a family compound right now, you know, but you never know. Okay, so big brother decides he's going to move to Montana, then he's going to sell his house, right? And then it becomes not a family compound situation where everybody's kumbaya. So having a family compound of my own on 100 acres, I know what I'm talking about when I tell you that you, this kind of stuff does have to be upfront and in-your-face kind of, even if, I know you don't want to have an HOA heaven forbid you would have to do that, but hopefully there would be some other kind of...
Well, that's the reason we're subdividing this, so each family will own their own lot, just like anybody else in the community. And that's a lot sold, a new person moves in.
And I think that's awesome, but that there does leave an issue for the road to be even more of a consequence, but that's, it was the other thing. And then, the other thing I would like to know is, what does the county's projected, what is the county going to do with the spot that makes the horseshoe in there? Does the county have any...
The county has no plans for any development there. There's the missile silos, and then there was a compactor site there, so I think it's pretty much just leave it alone and don't touch it.
Yeah, it was reseeded years ago and it's just vacant.
Yeah. The county doesn't really want to touch that site.
No. Nobody wants to touch that site.
Yeah, well, that's what I would think, and so I would, I don't know. That's my only other concern was that, so...
Hey, Danny, one more, one more thing on the road, because private roads obviously are interesting. Before the B O C C gets this application, can you get the county attorney to provide, you know, guidance or what the county's responsibilities are or what we as the county can direct an applicant to do, and then that should at least put that part of the conversation to rest, hopefully?
That's, that's, that could be dangerous because it could set a precedent that would then reflect and affect other owners of property on private roads, like myself.
And that's why we have a county attorney. That's what he gets paid the big bucks for.
So it'd be worth asking the question then.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. And can we, do we need to do them separately? Jennifer, Danny?
I have some conditions, I think we should do it separately.
I'm sorry, what?
I have some conditions I want to propose to the board. I think two of them are going to be pretty straightforward that you guys can agree with, but...
Okay, we can do them separately, so...
So my first, these are going to be preliminary plat conditions. My first one is make a condition, and these will just go on, I think they're mostly for the final, but I think it's good to put on the preliminary too, is make a condition require the development to use the Denver aquifer, not just an advisory. Second one is make a condition that the private road be established to a type 1 private road within their current property boundaries, just put that as a condition. I don't think we can extend further on that. And then my third one is, I don't think we have a right to make them do a shared road, private road agreement, but I think we can make a condition, just have language in there that shows a condition for good faith, good cause effort to establish a recorded shared private road maintenance agreement if Elbert County does not agree to maintain the road, which they stated they have not. And those would be my three.
And that last one?
Last one, yeah.
And these were against the...
Preliminary plat, not the rezon.
Preliminary plat, not the rezon, okay.
So make a condition, last one Danny, is make a condition for a good faith and good cause effort to establish a recorded shared private road maintenance agreement. We could just end it there. But again, that just adds language in there to just make sure that they all do talk to each other, but not quite enforceable.
Right.
And can I ask a clarifying question to your second condition, Kyle? You said that they would only be held to change the prop, change the road within their boundaries?
Within their current, the current property boundary, yeah. I would love to bring it to 124, I just don't think that that's a legal issue.
Okay. And is that something...
But at least that road would be established through that entire property.
I see. So, and I know when I looked at, I mean, hearing our applicant representatives say that those conversations happened, that they were supposed to try to take it all the way down, I mean, based in what we see, which is the referral letter, we don't see that, we just see that, you know, that Road 23 needs to be built out. It doesn't exactly say that what the boundaries are for you guys to build it out. So I guess my only question would be whether or not, can you put that condition on the county, when was the county, like, Roads Public Works Office who said to try to build it out? Can we put a condition on the county's public works office?
It would be established anyway as part of the final plat, but...
Okay.
If you want to. Our Public Works folks are men a few words sometimes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
With their comments.
Do you have any changes to it?
No, not necessarily.
Yeah, one, I don't think it needs to be added, but I think it's a good place to have additional language. Yeah, we just can't sit here and state that they need to have the money available to then extend it past their property line.
Right.
And also have to negotiate with that private property owner who may say no.
Right. Well, yeah, and in my mind, the way that Jill presented it was that they obviously can't force the private property owner to make them, in which case I would assume that the county's public works office would say, you're right, and neither can we.
Right.
So please just do it on your own property.
Yeah, they're making the requirement for a type 1 road to give them driveway permits.
So I'm fine removing it, I just, I heard, I heard comment on the board though that they, you know, they wanted some type of effort to extend it past that, and I just wanted to make it be clear that, you know, I don't think that's the applicant's responsibility then to establish it beyond their property line.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, I don't think it might be even necessary to have it in.
Yeah, I'm fine removing it.
But I see where, you know, applicants coming from is that if the other property owners don't allow that, then it can't happen anyways.
So, I'm fine removing it, so then we can just stick with the condition to develop, for the development to use a Denver aquifer, and then the additional good faith and good cause effort, if you guys are fine with that? Okay? So then I'll make a motion for the rezon. Yeah, rezon first. I move the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners for Case RZ-2025-0004, subject to the following conditions as recommended in the staff presentation.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Do we need to do a roll call vote? Yes, all right. Roll call vote, please, Wendy.
Roll call vote. DeeDee Shotgrace?
Aye.
John Gresham?
Aye.
Nicole Hunt?
Aye.
Kyle D'Nardo?
Aye.
Dan McCollum?
Aye.
Diana Edstrom?
Aye.
Ken Madsen?
Aye.
Robert Politik?
Aye.
Vice Chair, you have ayes seven, nays zero.
Motion pass. All right, and now entertain a motion for the preliminary plat, please.
I move that the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Pardon my, pardon my. I'm sorry, my correction is eight to zero, my apologies.
Oh, all right.
I'll restart. Again, I move that the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners for Case PP-2025-0002, subject to the following conditions as recommended in the staff presentation, along with the condition to require the development to use the Denver aquifer, and then another condition for good faith and good cause effort to establish a recorded shared private road maintenance agreement.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote, Wendy.
Roll call vote. DeeDee Shotgrace?
Aye.
John Gresham?
Aye.
Nicole Hunt?
Aye.
Kyle D'Nardo?
Aye.
Dan McCollum?
Aye.
Diana Edstrom?
Aye.
Ken Madsen?
Aye.
Robert Politik?
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have eight for the aye and zero for nay.
Very good. Motion pass. All right, thank you guys very, very much. All right, is there any other meeting agenda items that we need to cover? Oh, and we closed, we closed this, but took our land use application, rezon and preliminary plat. Is there any other business items that need to be discussed, Jennifer?
Yes, sir, you may want to ask your fellow planning commissioners who are on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee if they would like to give an update to this group.
Yes, I'm happy to give an update. We had our open house and fifth steering committee meeting on October the 16th, last week, at the fairgrounds. We had a couple of really fantastic, interesting community consensus items from the survey, which is what we talked about during our steering committee meeting. I'll tell you the top six things that came back. First is that 98% of those who responded believe that Elbert County has a heritage worth preserving. 75% say no new residential development is needed. 81% view current road conditions as a weakness. 77% support focusing on local small businesses. 90% support preserving open space and natural areas, creating recreational trails. And the most common vision word used, when people could pick any single word of all words, the most common was rural. Their vision for Elbert County was rural. Other words that were selected were, that were highly selected, were no growth, controlled growth, less development, and improved roads. So there was a very strong consensus among the almost 1,000 people who responded to be smart about growth. So I felt that, actually personally, I felt like it was very reflective of how this planning commission has approached land use applications. I think it's something that's going to impact the comprehensive plan moving forward, the new one that we're putting together. The open house had probably about 50, 50 or so is what I counted, who showed up to the open house. They had boards up for a lot of questions around the road. They had boards up for, for a lot of questions around the room, and folks were encouraged to go board to board and give feedback on certain things, like, do dirt roads define rural Elbert County? Like, is that something that, that, that is a definition of what rural means to you? All the way to, where would you like to see more residential growth, if you want to see it, or where would you like to see non-residential growth? So I, I hope that there was some good feedback that, that the staff and Kim Lee Horn got. But I will say that I, I appreciated learning the survey results, seeing that a lot, most of, of the respondents had a similar vision as to what many of us on this planning commission have, and have given a pretty clear direction as to how to go forward. So now there's some refining to do, and so that'll be what the steering committee focuses on moving forward. But there are also going to be another open house. I think they said at the beginning of the year, though, that hasn't been pinned down, but January, February, we should see another opportunity for folks to come out and to give comment. I also recommended that where we have questions, or we're hoping to have more refinement in what that means to individuals, that it would be a good idea to send a follow-up email to those who indicated that they would like to receive emails, so that we can ask, you know, those 1,000 people who responded, hey, if you care enough about this, can you answer some more questions about what this means to you? That that might be helpful as we move forward.
Excellent, thank you. Anything from staff with regards to that?
I would just add that the survey results, both sort of the summary boards that were presented at the open house, as well as the full, complete, raw results are available on the comprehensive plan website, if you all would like to take a look at those.
All right, very good, Ken?
I don't know if I have too much to add, but, you know, it was a very well-attended event, and the people that attended the event seemed to have consistent opinions, as was displayed on, on all the displays. You know, the, 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 I guess the, the sentiment is, is, seemed to be still out there then, you know, now they want to see results, you know, this, this is what the community wants, and, you know, the community knows, they've known this all along, so now, now they want to see, they're actually put into place and, and have a defined plan with defined regulations that are consistent with their beliefs. And so that's, that's what they're looking for, for the next phase.
Very good. And what, what is that timeline for some of the next phases?
Good question. I think, so chatting with them today, nothing is finalized yet, but I think it may be appropriate to have one of the next steering committee meetings actually be a joint work session with the steering committee, the planning commission, and the Board of County Commissioners for, right, really getting into the land use. And again, that hasn't been finalized, so please don't commit me to that, but I think that that makes sense, and so, you know, when exactly that fits in, you know, the next, sometime within the next six weeks or so, perhaps? Again, we get into holidays and weirdness, but hopefully something like that. I really think that that makes sense to involve you all at that level for some of the next meetings. The goal is still, you know, to have the plan complete and, and be working on adoption in the spring.
Right.
So, I mean, it is moving quite quickly.
It's just right over the corner, yeah.
It is, absolutely, but, you know, the community engagement is a big, it's a big lift at the beginning of a project, and there has been a lot of feedback now, and so, once we get some more of that land use feedback, I, I would expect for a lot of the plan in draft form to be able to come together, and then really be able to have, again, additional feedback from the community, from you all, another open house, something like that, on, you know, an actual draft plan that's put together. So, it's, it's definitely moving along, we're somewhere around, you know, 40 to 50%.
All right.
Done, yeah, it's exciting.
Sure. Absolutely.
Question for Danny. So when you talked about the existing tree regulation, you said for any tree, for any mature tree removed, a mature tree has to be replaced. What's the definition of mature?
I have it pulled up, or I did. I believe the regulations say 10-inch diameter.
That's considered mature, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so 10-inch diameter is considered mature, and then I believe, I don't know if it's the six-feet height that we allow to be replaced. I know there's a standard that says all trees that we're replacing must be at least six feet tall, but with the mature tree replacement, it might have to be larger, but generally, that's what I've seen, is that they have to be at least six feet tall, so they are smaller trees coming in a lot of times, if, you know, but it is, the mature tree is defined by a 10-inch diameter, so that's relatively big tree.
Substantial.
Yeah, that's probably going to be.
I had it pulled up, I can send that out if you would like.
So has, has this regulation been enforced?
Well, that's an entirely different topic. Our, our code compliance is.
I guess, I'm, I'm guessing it has not.
I don't want to say it hasn't at all, I can say that I, I don't think that our code compliance has been out-monitoring that on a proactive basis, but certainly, as a part of applications, right, we know where there are trees, where there are planting things, so part of landscape plans.
And, and the last question is, what's the status of the draft that Nicole and I have put together?
It has been sent to the Board of County Commissioners. I have not heard any particular comments from them or from you all. It was also shared with you all.
I think, I had recently talked to Commissioner Buck, and he was hopeful that if we all had any other suggestions for amendments to the zoning regs, that that would be something that we submit and have some kind of a session where we're able to talk through that. I'm guessing that would happen at one of these board meetings, where, and do you have any idea when that might be, looking at our schedule? I know we only have the one meeting in November, but when might that be something that we see on, on our calendars?
For a work session on regulations?
Well, I don't know if it would be a work session, I mean, I think, the hope would be that we have an opportunity to review, that we come together, we talk about it.
Sure.
And potentially vote, and then move it on to the B O C C.
So I've only heard, aside from the, the tree preservation ordinance, I've only heard a couple of suggested other changes from Commissioner Edstrom, right, in the last few days we've sent those. I know Commissioner Buck, I know, has his own list, I know staff has a list, and so it's really a matter of, there's also some other potential things that may need to come before you quickly, or regulation changes. And again, we're working with the board on those first regulations.
Right.
Right, and going through those details. So if you all have other ideas, you can certainly send them. I think it would be most effective if we do go into a meeting with some kind of a list to start from. We don't have to, if you all want, we can set up a, more of a work session, if you all want to brainstorm collectively.
Yeah, I would like to set up a work session for an architectural plan. I really, really like to get that going.
Okay.
So is that the best way to send a preliminary plan to you first, and then set up a work session?
I, I think it depends on if we are, it depends on what the goal is. If we're just brainstorming, you know, other regulations that think we need, that think need to be changed, we can do that.
I mean, I think it's implementing an actual architectural plan, which I, I have a draft kind of working on, and then, but, you know, an architectural plan, there's a lot of topics in that, that I think need to be discussed across the board. It's not just, you know, tree-related, right? It's, it's a whole broad thing that we all need to discuss.
And then the difference with the working session is that we would only be discussing, we would not be taking any votes or any official action.
But we can, yeah, exactly, but we can narrow things down and get something, and then I can, I'm definitely sending it to you, Nicole, you'll definitely be reviewing it, so just be prepared.
Yeah, so maybe there are some topics that do need us to flush things out more, but then perhaps there are also others that we can have a good enough time to talk during an, an official meeting where we're taking votes.
Yeah, I, I just wouldn't want you to vote on something if you didn't have actual, you know, redline changes in front of you. And if those are all new, that's fine, too, but you want to be voting on something specific, right, to move, to move forward. And so we can absolutely do that, we can add either a work session, I guess, and/or actual, you know, regulation changes for you all to vote on if we.
Well, I guess I have a question then, because that would be a lot of work for staff to have to redline every idea out there, even if we're going to end up voting it down, or, or there's not enough support, right? Among the, the planning commission?
Right.
So, does it sound like that would be something, like, we would need to have a working session to just have a discussion over all of the things before you're redlining them?
Well, I think what could be, what could also help is if, if, if a list comes out of this group, whether that's, you know, emailed or, or through a work session, it kind of depends on how big it is, then that could also go to a work session with the board, so that they could provide direction on, you know, yes, these five are priorities for us, you know, and then maybe.
Speed them along.
Maybe another one is, and again, only for the sake of time and effort, like you were mentioning, right, maybe another one is a little bit lower on their priority list, so they could provide that for the same reason, that if it doesn't get to them, and then they'll be like, yeah, we're not really interested in that right now. So.
I see.
You know, we could certainly get that type of guidance from, from both of, both bodies, to be most effective, if possible. The other, other, other option is, you know, if, depending on how the budget comes out, what types of things are approved like that, if we can do a full rewrite of our subdivision and zoning regulations. I mean, from a staff perspective, I think that would probably be ideal, based on all of the feedback that I've heard from this group, from the board, from staff, from the development community, right, from everyone, right? I think we all know there's some inconsistencies, just a few, just a few things that are maybe a little bit too vague, right? And it's been, you know, there's been some Band-Aids on there to try to fix it and things like that, but I, that would be ideal, that is certainly a lot of work, a lot of time, and there's certainly a cost involved. And so, again, that's, that's being considered right now as well. So there's a lot of layers to this discussion.
I, I'm sort of wondering, since, it sounds like, I know the commissioners are working on some, we've been working on some here, you guys have recommendations, is there a way we can get a master list and say, let's all focus on these top five, and start, you know, whittling them down that way?
Right.
And, and that way we, we all come to consensus, we're all working on the same things, and we can get them accomplished and.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, we could have, you know, we could have a, a real work session dedicated to talking through the topics, you know, and maybe it's not trying to outline all of the solutions, but maybe it's starting by outlining, like, this section has to be addressed, and this section has to be addressed, and, you know, maybe there's another topic that's just missing altogether. So certainly, there's a lot of options, and sometimes too many options.
And, yes, and I think, based on where we're at with the zoning regulations that went to the B O C C that they're still talking about, a joint, to me, a joint work session would make more sense, because if we as a planning commission decide we want to work on X, Y, and Z, but it's not anything the B O C C is interested in, then we're spending a lot of time.
Absolutely.
Because it, it ultimately is up to them, so.
And just as an update on, on what they're sort of working on, the big, the big item, if you all didn't see some of those work sessions, is they're considering, rather than completely eliminating the EDZ, what they've been talking about is potentially splitting it into two different EDZs, I guess, for lack of a better word. And then narrowing down the list of what's allowed in that to be, to work more as an incentive versus just, right, right now, there's like 85 land uses, right, allowed anywhere in the EDZ, anywhere in the county, and so that's a very large area, right? So something along I-70 is exactly the same as something right along the EDZ, right on Kiowa Bennett Road. And so, that's kind of what they've been talking about, is splitting that into two different zones, so to speak. The, an eastern EDZ, which would include I-70 and Highway 24, that would have commercial and some specific, more industrial-type uses that are appropriate along the interstate, and then having a different western EDZ zone west of essentially Comanche Creek, right, as sort of Kiowa and west, and then having much more limited retail, commercial-type uses there, right? Medical was one, right, that they focused on a lot. So that's kind of where they are right now, that's what they're considering, looking at those uses, and then actually looking at the map and see if they want further changes to the map as it currently exists.
So maybe moving forward, if you would maybe give us further direction on, maybe that's something like a work group, where we can talk about what the priorities are, and what kinds of things that commissioners would like to address first? And then maybe even just a deadline of if you have any other ideas, let's get it onto this master sheet, so that.
Yep.
It's all something that we can talk about, and we can start to streamline the process.
Yeah, absolutely. If you do have big topic ideas, right, other than ones that have already been identified, right, I know the architectural standards, I know the tree preservation, I think there's some, right, regarding noticing and some of those things. Some of those are, some of those are more cleanup versus, some of them are like major new policies, and so, both are valid, 100%. I do think it'll help if we, when we know if we can consider doing a complete overhaul or not, right, because that strategically kind of helps define what makes the most sense to pursue. But regardless, I think we should work on that list, so I would encourage all of you to, please do send in, you know, your comments, we can work with, I can work with the board and see about scheduling, see what they prefer in terms of whether that's, you know, some more casual conversation about what you all have recommended, if they're ready for a work session, if they want you all to have a work session first, so we can certainly have those conversations with them. I will give just one reminder on behalf of the county attorney who's not here, which is, when you do send things in, if you would send them to staff without copying all of your colleagues, because when you do copy all of your colleagues, that is essentially creating a meeting. And so that's been recommended to, be careful in how many people are copied.
Right, so one person would not be a meeting, but any more than one person?
Three or more.
Three or more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, on the topic of, like, legislative changes, is that applicable as well? Because we're, if we're not talking about anything that is related to, you know, actual land use applications, but more like zoning changes, things like that, is that, is that applicable as well?
The, the meeting part is still applicable, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, and so it's just not having, it's kind of like creating a meeting, so that's where that's coming from, yeah, not really the land use side of it, so it's not about ex parte communication or anything like that.
Okay.
But you're right, legislative, so if you hear from, you know, your neighbors that say, I really wish the regulations allowed for this, that is very different than when there's a land use application before you write in a quasi-judicial hearing, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
100%. So, let's just wrap that back up, though. I would ask you all to continue to send in your suggestions, and then we can potentially put something on, we do have, what, almost a month before your next meeting, so maybe we can be in contact, and I can also be in communication with the board and see their preference, but, does that?
Yes.
Does that kind of satisfy everyone, and then we'll, but I agree, we want to hear what those changes are, how do we approach those, what's the top priority, or can we just start over? It'd also be a lot of work. But, maybe that's where we need to go, we'll see.
All right, thank you, thank you, Jennifer.
A motion to adjourn?
Yes.
A motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. It was.